I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation under God, neither civil nor liberty, without a single
Michael, there's going to be some screen sharing today too. All right. Thank you. I can ask for approval of this morning's agenda.
Motion to approve the agenda.
No, second. I have a motion and a second, a discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next, I can ask for approval of the minutes dated August tenth, twenty twenty-two.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussions? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next item I have is consideration to pay the claims for payment dated August seventeenth, twenty twenty-two.
Motion to approve.
No, second.
I have a motion and a second, a discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Taylor, morning.
Hey, how are you doing?
I'm good, thanks. We got a couple items of consideration to approve the engineering contract for a bridge deck over the South Fork Bridge of D sixty-five over Minerva Creek.
Yep, so we got plenty of them. There's what, three different bridges on here in this proposal. So pretty much with this, this is for them. We're paying them to design the plans for us. It's for three different bridges where they will remove the bridge deck and then put it back down. So it, because the bottom of the bridge is fine, everything that holds up the bridge is fine. We just need to redo the deck. So it should buy us, you know, thirty to fifty years of the bridge, so. It's the most cost effective thing when the bottom of the bridge is still in that good a shape. So that's kind of looking for it. The only one that was a little different is the one on D forty-one. One of the corners of the foundation just kind of needs touched up a little bit, so. I can't remember how much more that one costs us, but it wasn't enough to make me even think bad about it, because I mean, it's just a little bit more designed for them, so. Yeah, it was an extra five hundred dollars.
Don't worry.
Yeah.
So I would consider a motion to approve the engineering consulting for Bridge six, four, three, nine, one, four, two, two, and one, five, three, one, zero.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second, a discussion, and Calhoun and Burns does our inspections and they make these recommendations, correct?
Correct.
They consult with you.
Yep.
All right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Go ahead, Taylor, next item. Consideration for the final plans for Bridge one, five, three, oh, one over Honey Creek.
Yep, so this is on gravel road T Avenue, just less than a mile south of D sixty-five. Gets a lot of traffic. It is a farm to market gravel road. All the bridges around it at some point have been, in the last couple of years, have been on a load limit. So this, it just needs to get done so people can get through, you know, is it service of a lot of local farms and farming operations down there. So it's pretty simple design. It's pretty much what we've done on all the bridges down in this area. It's a hundred and forty foot long. So yeah, Bruce said there wasn't anything too special to it, just another bridge off the docket for us.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve.
No, second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, a discussion. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Next I have is consideration to approve utility permits for interstate power light in a power cooperative. Those are utility permits, UT twenty-two nineteen and UT twenty-two twenty.
We'll make a motion to approve as stated.
I'll second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Taylor. Any other updates for us?
Just that the highway paving job is supposed to be done on Friday.
Okay.
So that'll make me so happy. They were just asking us what our school is going to do, but it should be good.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
All right, at this point, Jim Bowman from Lion Energy introduced him and he's gonna, yep, if you'll come on up, and then who do you want to give?
Eric Canada.
Okay. And Tam Ellerding from the Harden County Community Endowment are both here, so. Take it away, Jim.
Great, great. Is Eric with us?
Yeah.
Okay, great. So how did we get here and what are we doing? So we're at Lion Energy. Our, one of our main goals is building strong communities. And we met with the Iowa, Iowa Falls Area Development Group and about a year ago and talked about their strategic planning and what they would like to achieve. And the more we spoke to them and their board, their leadership, it was evident that, you know, there's more to their dynamic economy than just Iowa Falls and that really we should be looking broadly. And some could argue it's beyond Harden County. Just your workforce alone, right, is, comes from a later shed from, from Barnum and White, so. We began to look at some new models in economic development, strategic planning. And I've been following Mark Weltman and I've known Eric Canada for many, many years, and I'll introduce Eric in just a minute. And wanted to consider, is there, is there another way to approach, how do we essentially help communities grow their economies? Harden County is not a different, or not unlike many other counties in Iowa and in the Midwest and in rural America, we're losing population. And and I like to say in economic development, the cardinal sin in economic development, don't lose people, right? Don't lose people, whatever you do, you know, you gotta, you gotta maintain your population. And that's, that's much harder than, and it's easier to say. But what, what Mark Lautman has done over the last decade or so has really become passionate about what you're going to see in terms of economic engineering. He wrote the book When the Boomers Bail over twelve years ago and predicted the labor shortage that we're in. And it's a pretty easy, I think, prediction if you just looked into demographics, but Harden County is an example of what's happening with our, our, our aging population, the baby boomers that are retiring, we're losing the most talented people in our workforce through retirement and, and there are not enough coming through the pipeline to fill the jobs and as the, maintain the population base. The good news is the generations that are coming up are going to catch up, but we do have this, this gap for the next at least decade or more that we've got to solve some problems of population. So and, and Eric's going to show you this, but I think a way to measure your, your local economy is your economy's always got to be growing faster than your population. If your population is declining, then we're, how does your economy fit in? And so what you're going to see is a very thoughtful, methodical way to approach economic growth. And yes, it involves economic development. They play a key and critical role, but it really cannot succeed unless all the elements of the, of the community, when I say community, the county and the, the communities within the county are engaged, are involved and are committed long term to changing what you're currently facing, which is a downward death spiral of losing population, drop of incomes, sometimes growth of low incomes or poverty, and then the whole housing issues and, and workforce issues. So Tam is going to speak also, but should we get Eric?
Yeah.
Eric Canada, are you with us?
I am.
All right.
Hello.
Good morning. I've known for, gosh, Eric, we've known each other probably thirty years. Eric one of the leaders in the nation in business, in economic development, but also he created the synchronous tool, which is the most common tool used in economic development for business retention and expansion. But he also has other elements of his, his his tool to help economic developers, again, actually internationally to manage economic development. So he's highly successful. He's written, he's an author in economic development and he's on the team. And we'd like to present the economic engineering. So Eric, take it away.
Thank you very much, Jim. Good morning, everyone. Pardon me. Sorry, I'm not able to be there with you. I'm reaching you from San Antonio today down here for conference. Economic engineering, as Jim said, is, is a new way to approach the concept of preparing your county, your communities within your county for economic growth. As Jim pointed out, the population trend is not good in Iowa Falls or in Harden County. And in Iowa Falls in particular, there's some issue with the household income as well. We need to look further at the data for this, but that's a significant drop that happened in twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen. So clearly there's a question mark there, but, but the issue is, how do you address that? And you've done plans in the past because we want a strong economic future for our community. We want a place where our kids can come home, our grandkids can come home and visit at least, or maybe our kids stay there, or maybe our grandkids move back to our community. For that to happen, we need to decide what the future is going to be. If it continues to diminish, it will continue on that path. If we do nothing differently, the future is already predicted by the graph that you saw a moment ago. So this is a question of what do we want for our children and our grandchildren? In economic development, of course, there are many economic development organizations. Many of them are laissez faire or they're, you know, they, they have less than they need in terms of resources, capabilities. For this to work, we need to have a very strategic, predictive and an integrated economic development program. And that's just not on the employer side. That includes tourism. It includes agriculture. It includes all aspects of the Harden County economy. This program is set up to bring those together under a single umbrella. We have completed the feasibility. The feasibility was with a group of eight to ten individuals, and that was done in April, and we looked at, you know, the county, the population, some of the issues, and we came to certain conclusions, which I'll touch on in a moment. The second phase, which we are entering now, is what we call economic architecture. This is a unique aspect to this program because in the past, when you've done planning, you have brought a groom of experts like ourselves to help you do a plan. You've taken that plan and then you take it to the public, whatever that ultimate plan is. This process is upside down. We are now gathering people together. We're trying to recruit individuals who need to be involved in this planning process because they're going to be responsible for making it happen. That is the significant difference. If those people aren't involved at this stage, any plan that we produce or present to them is somebody else's plan. And, you know, it doesn't affect me. It's not part of my interest. So at this stage, we are bringing people together. Sixty to eighty people, and we're going to look at all the aspects that we looked at during the feasibility trial. And we're going to confirm where the county is, where the county wants to go, and what it's going to take to get there. Then ultimately there, the third phase is then we begin to build the programs, and this will make more sense as I get a little deeper into this. But then we begin to build the programs that are going to deliver the jobs and the population that Jim referred to, that we're going to be needed if we are going to be successful. So in your case, in Harden County, that may be four to six different program initiatives that need to be put forward, as well as supporting organization that has to happen for them to, to be part of it. So this is the economic engineering process. It's these three phases. We are through feasibility. We are approaching economic architecture. So that's the stage that we're in at the moment. We are doing the recruiting. As I said, this program doesn't just deal with employer economic development jobs. This deals with any aspect of the economy that Harden County already is involved in or would like to be involved in. If you want to engage in retirement, for example, that can be a program initiative that will generate the jobs that are required for Houghton County's future. If you want to get into films, that's another option. Agriculture, remote work, extractive energy is obviously limited to those companies and organizations that have those resources in the ground. So we're looking at all aspects, and again, all these aspects are going to be chosen by the community. By those sixty or eighty people in the room, they are going to decide which of these initiatives they want to pursue. In addition, every one of these initiatives has a requirement. If you're going to attract workers, that may require some housing. How does that housing happen? Where does it happen in Harden County? It doesn't all happen in one place. It may be distributed across the county. But what's required, what has to happen in order for those houses to be built, in order for workers to be brought back into the community? That means financing, that means land use planning, that means planning and preparation, site preparation, and obviously ultimately construction. Those are covered in each program initiative that you decide you want to pursue. How many workers are we going to need to attract to manage the visitor program or to support the visitor program or the employer program or the agriculture program? Those are the questions that we address in this second phase, and everybody in the room is part of that decision-making process. So this isn't you setting forth a plan that they will have to approve and support. This is them creating the plan that they are going to support. Now, I mentioned the feasibility. This is the feasibility. We use a calculator as part of this process because we want this to be grounded in the real world, in something that we can manage and track and decide whether or not we're performing up to our speed. So this calculator is part of the process. In this example, the feasibility group decided that we've been losing population over, what, forty years? It's currently about sixteen, eight hundred and forty-six people. We want to stop the erosion. We want to just bring it to a break even point. So we use the number seventeen thousand in the future. That becomes the goal. If that's the goal, what's happening with the population, those determinations are made again by the group of individuals in the room and then confirmed later by outside experts, not ourselves, but other people from the state of Iowa. And that helps us determine how many jobs need to be created. So that bottom line that I just highlighted over the next ten years, based on the feasibility, the preliminary estimates of the feasibility trial, it looks like about ten, or about a thousand twenty-eight jobs. That's a doable number. That's about a hundred jobs a year. That can be half, that can manage, be managed. Excuse me. So where do those jobs come from? This is the next discussion that the group gets involved in. And this is where they begin to decide, okay, are we focusing on retirement? Are we focusing on government jobs? Are we focusing on agriculture? In the case of the feasibility group, we started out focusing on the employer group because that's the best organized probably in the county at the moment. Now, just because it's organized in Iowa Falls doesn't mean that it doesn't need to happen elsewhere in the county as well. So this is looking at the county as a whole. So the employer theater is one of those. The next two were visitor and remote work. Those both have potential for creating jobs, bringing families to the community in the eyes of the feasibility group. The third or the fourth was agriculture. Agriculture has some potential for generating the kinds of jobs that are required. So the focus, based on the feasibility group, is to be on those four areas of initiatives. Those, if properly managed and properly supported with resources and people, we could generate a new two hundred and fifty jobs that would be beyond what's happening organically right now. That two hundred and fifty jobs, if you look down at the last highlight that just popped up, would mean that we would be under by only fifty-seven jobs at the end of ten years. And that's obviously within sort of the margin of error. So with a little luck, we can definitely beat that. With a little bad luck, you know, we're not going to quite be there, but we're very, very close to being where we need to be. So it's doable, in other words. Next step, and this is part of what you get from phase two. You can't read this. You're not supposed to be able to read this. Basically, the point is, every one of those programs that impacts a community in Harden County will have their own plan. Underneath the broader umbrella of employer theater, you know, each community can have their portion of the plan that they're going to be working on. That's why we get people in the room from every community in the county. It's not just volume. It's strategically selected participants who are involved already in their communities and who want to see their communities grow and are willing to put some time and energy and perhaps resources on the table to make that happen. So the county will have a section of the plan. City one will have a section of the plan. Community two will have a section of the plan. Each of you will have parts of it that you will be responsible for, all of which will be monitored by the steering committee over this period of ten years and will continually be adjusting those plans in order to make sure we get to those jobs that are required over that time. On the right, you see workforce. In order for this to happen, as Jim said, population is critical. We can't continue to lose population. For these programs to be successful, there has to be a workforce component. That workforce component has to bring new families, which means workers into the community so that they can support the jobs that are being developed. A very holistic plan, again, covering all the different program initiatives you're focused on and covering the entire county and bringing the entire county together to work on this. The pricing estimate, the feasibility study was about sixty-five hundred dollars. That was a one-time, multi-day process that we went through, and of course, all the effort to get there, to get the group together, to get the group prepared for understanding why they were in the room, and obviously to complete it. Phase two, the phase that we're currently in is about nineteen-five plus expenses, and we'll have some other ancillary, ancillary costs associated with that as well. The next phase after the economic architecture is when you take the initial plans that the group puts together at phase two and you refine them into great detail to determine what has to happen under the employer theater, what has to happen under the tourism or recreation theater, what happens happened under any other area that you're working. Those will be very deeply defined, will have costs for supporting that program, will have costs for infrastructure that's required because you have to have buildings, you have to have industrial land if you're going to attract new industrial investors. Maybe you need hotels because that's part of the tourism plan. All of those things have to be costed out, and that's what phase three is, where we're putting together details about what it's going to be done and what's the cost of doing that, so that we know exactly where we're going. The difference, of course, here are many. One, everything is under one umbrella. We're including the workforce component as part of it. This is multiple organizations crossing the entire county, engaging the individuals who are going to be doing this over the next ten years. The leadership in the room may not even be there in ten years. So part of this process is leadership development over time and getting people involved, especially younger people involved in the future of our communities in Harden County. So identifying those resource gaps, bringing in resources, because you're the first to the party, you're the first one doing this in Iowa. There's a great opportunity to get some state funding because you're a pilot program, so to speak. So there are other resources that are going to be available that you've never had before, because again, you are breaking new ground. So these opportunities need to be explored. There's a team that does that, you know, so all these things begin to come together. It's an ongoing process. It will cover over that ten years. There will be people coming and going. People will retire. New people will be brought into the process as it goes. So how is it different than what you've done in the past? You've obviously done the thinking, you've done the assessing, you've done the planning, and then usually it stalls. And it stalls because nobody's underwriting it. How much is it going to cost to do it? What has to be done before it can be done? Nobody's managing it. You try to manage it from your central location, but if people aren't involved, you're the only one doing the work. Then, of course, we have to account for the results, and we have to decide, are we on track or not on track? The calculator and the process that we're putting together does that, so your program is going to be under management for ten years. The fourth step is release. We go. We, we do whatever is necessary. The programs are being underwritten. The programs are being executed. The finance team is working on where money comes from to do the different initiatives that people want to complete. The infrastructure team begins to work on those infrastructure issues, some of which are two, three years out, four years out, five years out. So they won't be able to contribute jobs until we get to that fourth or fifth year where that infrastructure is in place. But all that has to start today. Somebody has to make that initiative. We recruit and train people to participate all the way through this process, and everything is monitored and managed by the steering committee. That's not micromanaged. Each of the communities still have their own initiatives, still have their own efforts, and the people are responsible for it. But the monitoring of the steering committee is just to make sure we're on track, and if we're not on track, what are we going to adjust in order to get back on track? So there's that constant process of calculating and recalculating what the impact is and where we need to be going. And ultimately, you launch this hard and bend the curve or harden thirty, thirty-three. I highly recommend you have a name for the program because you can generate a lot of energy around promotion and, and get people involved in this process. Mark Lotman, who Jim mentioned, myself, Jim Sharp, Sarah, are here to support you. Our job is not to come to conclusions or not to tell you what to do. Our job is to help you through this process. Make sure your questions get answered so that you can keep moving forward, and that's what we are here to do through every phase, one, two, three. If you need us in four, we'll be there for coaching and support as well. So this is a process that, as Jim said, is very new, but it's a very different approach, and it has the great power of being able to bring your community together around an initiative. Thank you, Jim. Thank you, everyone. Appreciate the opportunity.
Can I for any questions and answers?
Absolutely.
By the way, there's a seasoned economic developer too. He's worked mainly in the state of New Mexico. Many, many years of doing the projects and, and business attraction, business retention, housing developments, and he's, he's on the regular speaker circuit along with Eric. They trained for economic development. They just finished a basic training course, I think, in Albuquerque, where he, but.
Uh, this was in Silver City, yeah, New Mexico.
They practice economic development constantly. Mark runs a lab in Albuquerque, and John Sharp, who you saw on the team, came from the Department of Energy Sandia Lab, I think it was Sandia Lab. So he's a D O A, he's the numbers guy. He built the calculus, which is really unique of how we probably measure and continue to measure the performance of job creation, population growth or decline. He's the brains behind that, that map formula. And Sarah, I mean, you saw there, it's actually Mark's daughter, but she's the director of the lab in there. This, this is a, a think tank group that works on solely economic development. So before I turn over to Tam, we all have seen plans. Okay, you've got a Harden County plan. Question is, has this been implemented? And I would, I would argue probably not much of it, okay? And it's not unique. We see this all the time. Again, why is Lion Energy doing this? We want to help communities empower yourselves to see growth. It's in our best interest to have strong communities too, right? So we can, we can continue to grow our business. So we funded with, in partnership with I T C, our transmission partner, and Midland Power Co-op that first phase. We paid a hundred percent of that cost. Again, this is a pilot project. I have been speaking to the state of Iowa. They are, they are interested in this. They want to actually observe phase two, so they want to send representatives to phase two. The Iowa Rural Initiative is watching this. The Institute for Decision Making, who helped you with your plan, is now on the team. So Drew Conrad will be participating, so we've got more professional and technical help. And it makes sense to engage, I think, and I think others, your community foundation, right? What a better role to then be involved with this kind of initiative. It's long-term. It helps the growth, the welfare, the people of Harden County, and that's why we approached Tam to consider helping us in leading this. So Tam, I know you want to make.
Sure, sure. You know, I, I, when, when Jim approached me with this, I thought, you know, I'd like to see our foundation more than just giving out money to grants, to grants and seeing projects going in Harden County. And so leadership is, is another mission of the Harden County Community Endowment Foundation. And so I thought this is a great opportunity for us to travel the county and, and really see how we can help in areas, and people have, you know, remarked that I know everybody in Harden County, but that's because I've lived here all my life and I've been associated in other, other, other communities. So we have a team of the steering committee, Jim and I, Mark Bushkamp and B J and Jody Anderson, the administrator of Iowa Falls, and Aaron Budwick, administrator of Eldora, and Roger Nisley is an accountant, and Doug Truex is a banker, and then the people that were mentioned on the video and with that Institute of Decision- And then the people that were mentioned on the video and with that Institute of Decision Making. These people are all numbers people. Well, I'm not numbers people. I'm relationship people. So that's why we need somebody back there doing these numbers things. And if we can bring the people together and they can manipulate the numbers, we have something for long term. This is not going to be, you know, this is going to outlive my lifetime, for sure. Um, but I think this is something that is really needed and, you know, I think Hardin County should feel really good about being the guinea pig of this. Because our foundation has been the guinea pig of things for the community foundation of Ritter DeWitt. And we've been successful. Because we have been chosen to do that and we put our best foot forward. And we're going to get good information. So I really feel confident with all these people that are behind the scenes, you know, and if we can draw the ideas. Um, Lance was part of the, um, the phase one, and, um, I don't know if you have any comments, Lance, on that?
Uh, the big, the biggest comment I have is that you gotta be all in. Here, here's the thing. We're going to fade away to dust if we don't do something. This county will be firmer. It, it'll eventually happen. But if that happens, this whole state, the economy, everything's in trouble too. We need growth. In order to get growth, it doesn't come from just us three. It doesn't come from us five. It comes from the entire population. That this, a town was built by, by a population. It wasn't built by a person. And in order to continue to be these towns, keep growing and growing, we need the full community. And, and when I say the full community, I'm talking the entire county, all the cities in this county to keep growing as well.
Right. Thank you, thank you. And, and the, the group from phase one came up with forty people from across Hardin County that could be on this, this next phase. And then each of us on the steering committee has come up with some people and, and, you know, and I've got some people in mind that are, um, young people. Um, you know, I look at, at Taylor, you know, it's like, and he's the mayor of Radcliffe too. And so, you know, um, you know, Radcliffe, you know, Hubbard Union, New Providence, every community is, is needing something. So, so if we can all work together, that would be great. So, um, that's, that's my input on this and, um, and, uh, our board, our Hardin County Community Endowment Foundation Board is meeting tomorrow night. We don't know a lot about this. Our, our executive board knows some about it. So, um, I'm just kind of going on the fly and, and helping where I can and, um, you know, we just hope we can have the input from the county. Thank you.
Thanks, Tam. So, um, why are we here today? Not only to brief the county government and, and others, but to talk about the money, the financing of phase two. So Alliance Energy, I T C and Midland Co-op Power continue to want to help fund this again because we want to see this succeed. By the way, we want to replicate this in other counties going forward, but we've got to first succeed here in Hardin County and get through these phases. So we're willing to split that, that phase two cost with, uh, anyone that wants to match it. I've been told the county has an interest in that. So the total cost, again, we don't know because there's going to be a venue, costs and private food and beverage. We might even have a social function. If we get all these people together, what a great opportunity to say, let's, let's get to know each other a little more while we're together. Most likely it'll be October, right? You've got a lot of planning to do, a lot of, a lot of touches. Um, but, um, I'm estimating that total cost for phase two is going to be in that twenty-five, maybe a little bit, a little bit more than that. Once we have the number, we'll let you know. But half of that utilities are going to cover. So our request is, will the county match that? And then we'll answer any questions that you have.
Lance? Well, I went through the first half of it. Uh, it's very interesting. The, the biggest question is, are, are all the, are all the cities going to engage? We have to have, it's the same thing I said that day. You have to have a hundred percent participation. And I've talked to Taylor once. I think, uh, Dave's here, obviously they're in. Um, I haven't talked to all the cities. But I, I know we have to do something. Sitting here not doing anything is we're going to just keep declining and it, it's not a good process. It's not a good process for a county. It's not a good process for the state. It's not a good process for the nation in general. So.
Renee?
I think it sounds like a great program and I think we should be proud that we're going to be the first pilot county.
Guinea pig.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Initial cohort.
Yes, yeah.
Um, I, I believe in the process, I've, I've had great discussions with Jim and Tam and, and, uh, believe that this is something that will definitely, um, give us an opportunity to not only grow the community but grow relationships within the community that are definitely needed. And, uh, one of the things that came up when we had the referendum on the local option sales tax funds was to uh, support community betterment. And we've utilized those funds in the past for, uh, community betterment. And, uh, with your permission, I'd like to ask the auditor Peters to put a resolution on to fund, uh, not to exceed fifteen thousand dollars on next week's agenda to fund this out of the local option sales tax, community betterment, uh, fund balance.
I don't, I go ahead and put that on for the agenda. Okay?
Me too. I agree.
Alright.
So just I would wrap up. What does success look like? And this is where we need to challenge everybody. What's your vision for Hardin County and the communities in Hardin County? What do you see? And Eric said at the beginning, will your children and grandchildren or the children and grandchildren, the people in your circle, will they want to live here? That's the question that we need to answer. So how do we get there? It's, it's really everybody's responsibility to make this happen. So success will be strong leadership, both public and private sector. Fund the initiatives that are determined by the people, right? And, and, and hold each other accountable and measure performance. And when things don't go as planned, adjust. But this is long-term. And I do believe there'll be many watching Hardin County throughout Iowa and the Midwest. And, uh, we're, we're really excited to be part of this. So thank you for allowing us to be part of this.
When you say long-term, I see it never ending.
It never ends.
Oh, I think society. It's all comfortable in your, in your current surroundings and then, hey, everything's great. And then you have a generation that has, you know, different goals and objectives and a different culture and climate that make it easy to let your guard down.
Yeah, yeah. And the world's changing before our very eyes so quickly, just technology. But this remote, this remote workers program, we're going to want to pay real close attention to that because that's a quick way to create jobs in your community. You can work from, from home and create incomes, you know, that gets spent in your county.
One of my big questions I would also ask are root predecessors to this group. Um, we're in a ten-year plan. I'm looking at an age group of, of this group. Are they going to be around ten years or twenty years?
Great question. Erin Bugwick and I were talking about that very thing. So, yeah.
So what's their plan for handing it off?
Yeah, yeah. And we'll need to have that discussion, how that gets transferred and, and has a ongoing legacy. I think you're right. It never ends. It becomes culture.
It's those generations we need to have involved.
Thank you.
Alright. Other business this morning? Angela?
I'm going to put an R F A, request for application for the community catalyst and maybe the downtown housing program out.
Okay. Okay. Michelle?
I'm happy.
Sheriff McDaniel. Okay. Can they visit you at the state fair still or are you done?
We're still out there.
Okay. Michael? Jolene?
Two special elections coming up, September thirteenth.
And poll worker recruitment?
Yes, we are in the process of that. Um, one election is for B C L U W community schools. And the other one is for Elburne and Providence schools.
Are they on the same day, hopefully?
They are.
Perfect.
Um, Eldora will be having a satellite on the sixth, though, at fall.
Okay. Perfect. Thomas?
When is early going, sorry? Soon.
Twenty-fourth, next Wednesday.
Thank you.
Thomas, anything?
Two things.
Yes, sir.
Uh, commission met last night. We're going to be starting processing into a new budget here. Uh, looking at, uh, fiscal twenty-four. Um, had some ideas processed last night. And then the other is in, uh, comment to the presentation is that I really would like to get you guys involved in the economic recovery process. Um, in fact, we're doing a in-house class, the first week of October, that I think disaster recovery and economic recovery out of the disaster is as much as trying to build businesses because, um, facts are that about twenty percent of businesses will go away after a disaster because they, they have no way to recover, correct? So.
Perfect. You're happy to. You're in place. Attorney Meyer?
Pass.
Alright. Did or anything else? Alright, Lance?
No.
Renee?
Nope.
Okay, I don't have anything. I can ask for adjournment or recess.
I'll move this, I'll move to adjourn.
I'll second.
Hey, any discussion? You're done? All papers say aye?
Aye.
Aye, we're adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.